It is five o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order.
You do.
Sandy, would you please call roll call?
Counselperson Brennan?
Here.
Brennan, Perry?
Yes.
Hanson, McGinty?
Here.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to call for motion to suspend the rules for this meeting. Adam is going to talk about that a little bit later.
Can we be more definite in what rules we're suspending?
The Roberts Rules of Orders in the way that we transpired with our business meeting. What are you asking for?
I guess what I'm saying is, we're still going by the agenda format and things that we changed.
Yes, the only thing we are suspending is the way we make motions and second the motions and vote on the motions.
And then discuss it.
And the discussion, yes.
That part I don't like.
Okay, can we actually codify what we're doing?
Yes.
I mean, rather than suspending, can we codify what we are doing?
Yes, we can. How would you like it if we said?
How about the procedures that we followed prior to this recommended changes that we've had as a result of our early morning meetings?
Except for?
Everything the same as it was prior to the... In other words, it will be discussion, motion to take place as we know it is done, and a second to follow the vote to follow.
I guess I will just go back and say, we will suspend the way that we were making the motion, discussion, and then voting back to discussion, making the motion, and voting.
Can we... I would move to amend, to suspend the rules to say that there will be discussion, motion, opportunity for discussion following the motion if need be, and voting.
Right.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to suspend the way of doing business as motion, discussion, back to discussion, motion, discussion, voting. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item number two, do any of you council members have a potential conflict of interest on anything on the agenda? Okay. Item number three, consent agenda. A, approval of agenda. B, approval of minutes of May 13th, 2014 council meeting. C, consideration of setting pool wages for the 2014 pool year. D, consideration of amending gas operating and maintenance plan. E, consideration of approving amended policy of using Sac Community Foundation funds on behalf of City of Sac City. And F, receipts or disbursements.
May we move item C, consideration of setting pool wages for the 2014 pool year, to miscellaneous I?
Anybody have a problem with that?
I'll move.
I will amend, I know.
I move to...
Okay, there's a motion to move C and consent agenda to five under miscellaneous. Is there a second to that motion? A motion has been made and seconded to move C to five miscellaneous. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yep.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, anything else about consent of agenda? Will that be the...
I would move to adopt consent agenda.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent of agenda. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And number four is projects. A, Sac City facade project. Number one is consideration of approving CDVG drawdown number five in the amount of $3,027.
This is the one and only bill for, to pay for the drawdown for the one and only bill of tall grass, which tall grass is the company that was hired to do the 106, Section 106 historical inspection for the project.
I'll make the motion to approve the CDVG drawdown number five in the amount of $3,027.
I'll second it.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the CDVG drawdown number five in the amount of $3,027. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. A facade project, number two, is consideration of approving Tall Grass Historian LC's bill in the amount of $4,745.11.
I would move to approve Tall Grass Historians LC's bill in the amount of $4,745.11. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the Tall Grass Historian LC bill in the amount of $4,745.11. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And number three, under Sac City facade project, is consideration of approving the city's portion in the amount of $949.2.
I'll make the motion to approve the city's portion in the amount of $949.2. Second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's portion of the bill in the amount of $949.2. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
A Sac City facade project, number four, is consideration of approving city's advancement of private funding in the amount of $769.09. This would be the people's portion until they pay it. Is that correct?
I would make the motion to approve the advancement of private funding in the amount of $769.09.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's advancement of private funding in the amount of $769.09. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried.
A Sac City facade project, number five, is consideration of approving city's advancement of the CDVG funding in the amount of $3,027.
I'll make the motion to approve the city's advancement of the CDVG funding in the amount of $3,027.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the city's advancement of the CDVG funds in the amount of $3,027. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Number five is citizens' opportunity to address the council on items not on the agenda. Are there any? Okay. And at this time, I forgot to say welcome to you folks that remain tonight, so I'll be a citizen. Thanks for coming. Number six is license and permits. And A is approval of a noise pollution permit for the Kids LLC doing business as Sadie's Bistro and T with Lillian on June 14th, 2014. They're having a dance, and the actual band's going to be inside, but they're feeling that they're going to have too many people to contain them all inside, and that some of them will have to be on the street, and they will want to have the doors and whatever open so that the people can hear it.
There's no alcohol outside the building, correct?
I can't answer that. I don't know that for sure.
No.
But I don't believe so.
According to the other request that was in our packet, they're having the band outside.
Okay, well, the last report I heard was that the band wouldn't play outside because of their instruments. Maybe that's been updated since I...
I believe that's what she said in the last council meeting.
The last council meeting she did, but I mean, the request they turned in has the band outside.
Okay, maybe they're going to give them a tent.
I mean, I'm not...
No, that's fine.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I'm confused, I guess.
Well, if that's what it says in there, then that's what it is. I'm sorry.
And for the purposes of the noise pollution permit, I mean, other than if it's an issue of having the band outside or inside, I mean, in a manner of view, I think if the purposes of the noise pollution permit, that's probably a better conversation as far as the concerns over the use, maybe when we get down to the use issue on the agenda.
Right. What they're just asking for here is a noise variance.
I would move to approve a noise pollution permit for the Kids LLC doing business as Sadie's Bistro or T with Lillian on June 14th, 2014 from 7:00 to 11:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the noise pollution permit for Kids LLC doing business as Sadie's Bistro and T with Lillian on June 14th, 2014 from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thanks. Item number seven is continuing business. Blue Space Creative.
Basically, since the last meeting, I just wanted to let you know, we've set a meeting for the 29th of July, in which they are planning to present to anyone in a public forum at that time the results of the survey. If we do receive some information about advance information, a summary of what they've learned up to that point, I'd be happy to share that with the public.
So that meeting will be here in the council chambers?
Yes, yes. 29th of July.
At 5:30, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Chautauqua Park, is B?
Let's see. I believe that next week, they're planning on taking the roof off after further conversations between Tom Rem and Mike Allen. I think they're willing to take the roof off before the meeting occurs. So that's all been coordinated, but you'll see the fish house probably start to move early next week. The pillars themselves, I know we were still working out as far as scheduling with MG on running the trench and having the electrical lines ran over to the pillars. And then as far as the sign goes, I know Tom was working on getting the sign. He had talked with King Welding about doing a couple little components for us associated with it, sort of be a little more decorative. We would attain the poles, but he would help us with some more decorative elements of it.
And the springs are supposed to come for the stone shelter house this week, I believe, and they'll finish all the window project this week.
Okay, if there's nothing else there, we'll move on to C, urban development area update.
We, as, I know that the hospital meeting is supposed to be occurring anytime now, so I have contacted Mike to ask him for information on that, so that we can plan to intend to communicate with him our intent of having him involved.
And there's been a little movement on the school, obviously, rather than talking with them a little bit one-on-one and giving them some information.
Okay. We move on to eight miscellaneous, introduction. Now is the time and place? No, we're not having that. We're not having that. Now, introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2014-257 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Section 136.03, the Removal of Snow, Ice, and Accumulations," of Chapter 136 Sidewalk Regulations.
And I'll make the introduction of ordinance number 2014-257 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Section 136.03, the Removal of Snow, Ice, and Accumulation," of Chapter 136 Sidewalk Regulations.
What this is, is this was a request by the police department. All they wanted to do was clarify an element of the ordinance. The ordinance does not require notice for abatement, and so one thing they wanted clarified after talking with the city attorney is to make sure that there was a statement in there clarifying the fact that there is no notice required. Now, we still intend to provide one seasonal notice, which is an action we would normally do just to remind people who aren't used to that time of year coming up, but there wouldn't be subsequent notices, and they want to make sure that that was very clear within the code. So that was both a recommendation by the police department and the city attorney, updated if that is necessary.
My reading is wrong. It says that the property owner did not remove within 24 hours a budding property, or a property owner may be liable for damages. How could that be?
Say, for instance, somebody slipped, fell, hurt themselves.
But it's saying that they would be budding liable to be responsible.
You may be...
Part of that door, and they didn't clean their sidewalk, but mine is, that means that I'm liable? That's the way it reads.
A budding adjacent would be a budding to the right-of-way.
They'll say that. Okay, thank you.
Curden? No.
I think the term, I asked the same question. I think the term of budding is really talking about...
That's the way I look at it.
Yeah.
I think they're using the term of budding not only here, but I went through and checked the code, and they use it as...
Up to...
As basically for your property, where the sidewalk is in front of your property, but not adjacent to.
Where it abuts your property, the city right-of-way property.
Right.
Yeah, they define a budding and adjacent very differently.
Adjacent, I think the word adjacent would be your neighbors.
From my sidewalk construction.
Yeah.
If that's what you mean, that's what you mean. It don't mean me, but anyhow.
I mean, does he...
One thing that we did talk about a little bit earlier today when using that terminology is if we want to change that terminology, since it is found many times within the code, we should probably try to change them all at one time, and I'd ask call it for kind of a clarification on what he recommends we use in place, because we'll probably have 10 or 15 ordinances we'll want to change as a result of that.
As long as that's in the plan, I have no problem with it.
But, and I think, I think the liability here is talking about that you would have, it would be a liability to this, a financial liability to the city to reimburse them for cleaning the walks for you. Because the liability is, if someone slips and falls on your sidewalk, is there, at any point? I mean, I think, I mean, you could be sued for having ice on your sidewalk.
Well, I understand that. I get the way it came along with me.
I think the financial, financially liable to the city for the cost of removing...
I think it's more clarifying the association at the bottom.
Yeah.
I agree, and I think maybe if it's, if it's that confusing, it's not real good to have it, because it won't be understood by anybody else.
And would an attorney take it as that, or would he take it a budding to the neighbor?
It comes down to what the definition is of budding is. A budding means your property touching the sidewalk. That couldn't, that could not mean the neighbor, because that, the neighbor does not butt up to the sidewalk that's in front of your property.
And responsibility of the abutting property owners to remove snow, ice, and accumulations promptly from the sidewalk. The abutting property to the city?
So if this is your locks...
Well, I know what you're talking about. You'd need to have it verbally, and here we're understandable.
You probably don't want me to ask the city attorney then for your recommendation. We may not all understand it after that, but...
I mean, so what we're really saying is, is the responsibility of the property owner who installed or is...
Let's just say who's responsible for that particular sidewalk. Do we have a dictionary?
It is the responsibility of the property owners to remove snow, ice, and accumulations promptly from their sidewalks. If the property owner does not remove snow, ice, or accumulations within 24 hours after the snow event, the property owner may be liable for damages caused by the failure of said owner to use reasonable care. Does that make, is that easier to understand?
Well, the second part does, but it doesn't state that in the first part.
No, if you take that out.
Strike the abutting.
Yeah, just, why do you need to mean that?
To be adjacent to.
There you go.
There it is.
That even helps even a lot.
A piece of property abuts upon a street, join end to end, make contact with one end.
So to make contact with means that you have to be owning the property in immediate contact with it. So you have to own the property where the sidewalk goes through. Well, yeah.
Well, you did it.
And so I, to me, that means that this is clear.
It's going to be against it, so it might be against the sidewalk.
Yeah, it is the responsibility of the abutting property owners.
Also, it says adjoining.
It says adjacent.
It doesn't say adjoining, it says adjacent.
They're synonyms. It's the same thing.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify. But, you know, here's the thing, if we open up a can of worms and having to, you know, I don't want to make any more work than necessary. If we already have an adequate definition, then we have to come up with a better definition, which there perhaps...
We're probably the only people that are ever going to read it unless there's a lawsuit, and if a lawyer says that's the way it's supposed to be stated, then we're probably upholding court.
Yeah. Fine.
I mean, there, don't take me wrong, there's some that will read the ordinance, but not everybody will, unless they're in trouble with the ordinance. If it's correct according to our legal, is that who did this? Adam?
This was a model developed by, was it Region 12? Who was it? It wasn't Region 12. Who did our last debate, Sandy? Was it legal?
It's Iowa codification.
Iowa codification.
It's up to you folks.
So if it's Iowa codification, if we deviate from that, then we're...
It says code of Iowa, right?
Yeah, then we're going into areas that we really haven't, that are, you know, are...
Well, I understand all that. It's just that the wording kind of off the mantle.
Okay.
Okay, let's go ahead. Is there a motion? Is there a second? What's happened?
We've introduced it.
Yes, we've introduced it, ordering. We've discussed it.
If we say failure to remove snow, ice, or accumulations within 24 hours after the snow event will cause the property owner to be financially liable to the city for its removal? Is that what we're saying?
That they're not the owner of the sidewalk.
Yeah, the damages and remove are two separate things.
Sorry, yeah, I mean...
It says that here, though. Further, the city may remove the ice, snow, or accumulations and assess the cost of the amount of not less than $25 against the abutting property owner for collection in the same manner as property tax. So it says that pretty clearly, doesn't it?
Yeah.
To me, I'd know if I didn't do it, I'd have to pay $25.
I can go on with that.
Or more, yeah.
Or more. A minimum of $25. I always get a little wordy, but...
I would move adoption of ordinance number 2014-257 as presented. I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. Go ahead.
We introduced it, see.
Oh, okay.
I got the first from Bruce.
Oh, okay.
And this is for the first reading.
Right, we have it two more times, so you still have a chance to discuss it.
So we can, we can amend it at any of the subsequent readings?
Yes.
Again. So what is...
I would, I would move passage of the first reading of ordinance number 2014-257.
Right. Would you second it?
Would I?
Uh-huh.
You're the only one that can.
You don't, we'll be here a while.
I know.
Oh, motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2014-257, the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Section 136.03, the removal of snow, ice, and accumulations of Chapter 136 Sidewalk Regulations. Would you call for a vote, please?
Counselperson McGinty?
You'd ask me first.
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried.
You know, you could kill that final one, Hannah. I'd be nice.
In the, in the interim, could we ask the city administrator to get some clarification on the word abut?
I will be happy to talk to the city attorney, because as much clarification as an attorney can provide.
Okay, we're moving on to eight miscellaneous, B, the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2014-258, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to Section 149.02 applicability, applicability of Chapter 149, the Property Maintenance Code, the application of Chapter 149. Yeah, applicability of...
You might remember the...
We have to introduce them.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, we do. Would someone like to introduce it?
I definitely would.
Okay. Now you may speak about it.
Two years ago, the city council moved enforcement of this chapter under, away from the police department, and put it into the hands of the zoning administrator, zoning officer. Since that time, one of the things that has developed as a result, and we're always looking for streamlining opportunities, is that the city has been using Chapter 50 to enforce tall grass as part of the nuisance abatement process. What that has caused is nuisance abatement allows for a hearing and quite a lengthy process, a challenge process to enforcement of it. Chapter 149, which is property maintenance, could be used by the police department to enforce tall grass, and this enforcement can be in a very, very short timeframe, which in the case of dealing with grass issues is more conducive to getting compliance with the issue. So I, one of the recommendations from the police department was that we consider putting this chapter back into the hands of the police department for enforcement purposes.
Is it, instead of striking the enforcement of the chapter as a responsibility of the zoning administrator, could we leave the sentence and say enforcement of this, of this chapter is a responsibility of the zoning administrator and/or the police department? So it would work for either one?
I think that would be absolutely fine. I don't think either side would have an opposition to that.
That way, that way the zoning administrator can use it when there's P and Z concerns. The police can use it when it's there.
Responsibility of police department or the zoning administrator?
Enforcement of this chapter is the responsibility of the zoning administrator and/or police department.
I would move adoption of ordinance number 2014-258, adding the words and/or the police department at the end of the ordinance as written.
And I'll second it, since I'm the only one here that can.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2014-258 entitled, "An Ordinance Amending the Code of Ordinances of Sac, City of Sac City, Iowa by Amending Provisions Pertaining to Section 149.02, applicability of Chapter 149, the Property Maintenance Code," by adding the words of the police department and/or zoning officer at the end of an 149.02.
It'd be and/or the police department.
That's what I said.
Yeah. The rest of it's already there.
Oh, okay. Responsibility of the zoning administrator and/or police department.
Call for a vote. Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. And I know the police department would like you to consider waiving two and three, so their tall grasses that they need to be serving, that can be their first one and their junk. So if that is anything you'd like to entertain, I know I was asked to ask you that.
I'll, motion to dispense with second and third reading.
I'll second it.
Motion has been made to remove the second and third reading of ordinance number 214-258, an ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to 149 dash point 02, applicability of Chapter 149, the Property Maintenance Code, with the addition of and/or police department. Would you call for a vote?
Counselperson Brennan?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Miscellaneous, eighth miscellaneous is C, is consideration of approving for the Kids LLC doing business as Sadie's Bistro, and T with Lillian's request to use public property. And that's, I want to use the street. That's the rest of it.
That's the rest of it.
Do you have any problem, police department?
No. Do they have a five-day liquor license to have beer outside?
They have not applied for a five-year, a five-day liquor license. There is a June 10th council meeting. I would assume that they plan on doing that by then. Anything you would do as far as use goes that is associated with alcohol would be contingent upon obtaining that five-day liquor license.
She knows that, because we told her that she had applied yet.
Have you been approached about providing security for the event?
I was approached at the last council meeting outside.
Have you confirmed that you're willing to do so?
I told her I should be able to, unless something, scheduling all of a sudden changes with the police department, I, at this point, I should be able to.
I didn't say that there would be an additional contingency that proper security has been obtained and is kept during the event.
Well, he said yes, and I would assume that if that was not possible, that you would obtain somewhere else. Well, he said yes, and I would assume that if that was not possible, that you would obtain somewhere else.
Well, like I said, the only time there'd be a problem for some reason, if a guy calls in sick or emergency of some sort where my schedule changes, that would be the only thing.
Only reason why I think it would be important to point that out is you might remember the discussion two weeks ago, when the discussion was that she wanted to sell alcohol an hour before Janzman was going to be providing service to her, and there was that discussion between her and I, that that's part of the requirement is that you have security in place. So that's why I say I wanted to make sure it's probably important to clarify that.
I'll make a motion to approve the for the kids LLC, DBA, Sadie's Bistro, and T with Lillian's request to use the public property with the contingency of security being provided.
At this point, that's not some moot point. They don't have an alcohol license.
And a liquor license.
And then getting, is there any point, I know it sounds emotional, but is there any point in passing this until those things are there?
I don't really think so.
There is a June 10 council meeting that should, I mean, there is another council meeting before that day.
Are we assuming, or can she not use the public property even if there's no alcohol out there? Can, because what she said is that they might be on the sidewalk outside, and because it would be an approval, it'd get too hot or whatever. We're assuming that she absolutely is serving alcohol outside.
All I'm going by is the map that she has with beer here, and the verbiage that said, Ross won't be operating the beer cooler just outside the door.
That's why we should be assuming that she's going to be selling alcohol. I think probably you're right in saying that.
Unless other things have changed, because when she approached me for the first time for security, I was at her business, and it was pretty clear to me, now this was the previous date, that there was going to be alcohol served outside, because the street was going to be blocked off.
Well, the only thing I'll say is, and we were all in the room that night, is two weeks ago when she told us what she planned on doing, this does not match what she told, verbally told us two weeks ago.
No, that's why I said it.
I said she'd be here tonight to be able to kind of clarify some of these points, but...
I guess because there's so much obfuscation.
We just have a motion on the floor. If there's not a second, we'll just say dies for lack of a second.
Motion dies for lack of a second. We'll move it to the next meeting.
I will notify her that there's some lack of clarity.
Okay. All right, eight miscellaneous D. So what do you want to do with this one? Consideration of approving for the kids LLC doing business to Sadie's Bistro and T with Lillian's request to close six street on, from a main street to alley of block 18 on June 14, 2014, from noon until midnight.
I would recommend tabling this. I mean, there's no reason to approve this without all the other things, too.
We will table to the next meeting. Eight miscellaneous E is introduction and first reading of ordinance number 2014-256, entitled an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates.
Okay, there's a couple of things we need to introduce. Oh, sorry.
But I would introduce ordinance number 2014-256, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates.
No.
There's a couple of things going on in this proposed amendment. The first one, you will see 92.043, which was sitting on your table, the newest version was sitting on your table when you arrived. 2.92.043 pertains to late penalties, and you'll see B has been added. What B would do is if requested in writing, a governmental customer may be forgiven for late penalties by action of the Sac City Council. So it would provide a path for bodies that are paying people's property taxes to be forgiven on a case-by-case basis by the city council. And the next one, 92.044, what that one, Section 3, Section 5, and Section 4, 5, yeah, through 5, all pertain to a little bit of clearinghouse on updating some fee rates. You'll see that the corresponding old fee has been stroked, has been stricken, and a new fee rate has been applied to the side, and it has been underlined. To kind of talk about these is one group together. Our fee structure hasn't been changed in almost two decades, we figured internally as we were going back and doing some looking. And of course, the rates have changed considerably, and of course, these staff costs have increased significantly in that time. For instance, I give you the example of roughly $35 an hour for an employee. If you get a call out after hours, you're talking about overtime rates for that employee for two hours for a call out. So you're talking about $105 cost for a call-out situation. Now, we don't get very many of those, but when we do get them, we give you an example. The idea here was to start to upscale to compensate for those cost changes. So you'll see that for connections, you see the rates going from 25 to 30, and 50 to 75 for off-hours to start compensating for that difference. Under the deposits, of course, the water rates have increased, and the entire intent of a deposit is to protect the city when somebody skips town, so that we can recoup the cost if they try leaving and stealing money to the city. The only people that have to pay deposits are, of course, those who can't establish, have not been able to previously establish some type of credit basis to avoid paying a deposit. You'll see the recommendation there is to move the deposit for water as a flat rate of $100 to $150. That's primarily the changes. The only other one in here is insufficient funds for the most part, and the recommendation there was to move the insufficient fund charge from 25 to 35 dollars.
How frequently do we have governmental bodies that have late fees?
Oh, I would say more regularly than, I mean, in some cases, they're more regular than others. How many of them would like to have requested potentially receiving a forgiveness for such? Two bodies come to mind in the last couple of years.
I can reflect some on the counties. For example, in April, on the 15th, they received the fax from the city for the city to defer the bill, which would due the 14th. That's kind of a problem. And this last month, it was due on the 17th. One of the unfortunate things, they had the computer break down or printer break down. They weren't able to do it. They should have walked it out, but they mailed the check, and we got a DH, and it was due the 17th. That sound good?
Or do you think on the one that you're talking about for April, that it has to do with their, that the date of their meeting was the 14th? Because our bills are not due in the middle of the month. They're always due the first week of the month.
The schools, the county, they have to have, just like us, a meeting to approve a particular bill before they can be approved and be paid. That was the purpose of it. Make sense?
I think it's always nice to play well with other governmental entities. I can move over a second.
I meant the ordinance amending the Code of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates, and each one of the chapters that's involved after that, 9043, 4, we got in Section 4 of 9209, and Section 6 and Section 7 went out to...
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2014-256, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sac City, Iowa by amending provisions pertaining to water rates. Would you call for a vote, please? Councilperson Branny?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you.
Any point of having the second and third readings of that?
I would only say because we're changing rates, several different rates associated in this. I'd at least go to the second. My recommendation would be to at least go to the second reading.
Sounds good.
I mean, while they aren't regular fees, the deposit one could have an impact on people.
We'll move on then to eight miscellaneous F, discussion on golf course storm sewer drainage system.
Quite a bit of work has been going on the last week or so pertaining to the storm sewer that runs into the golf course area. Basically, the way to explain it to you is there is a Y joint that runs into the golf course. You have a line that is running from South Park over into the golf course, and you have a line running from South 10th Street over into the golf course. And these join up out there in about the middle of that significant valley out there in the golf course, and then from there, they run to the other side, the south side of the golf course. After, we've had some issues, of course, with sinkholes up on the South 10th Street area of the storm sewer line. And recently, we've had some backup problems occurring in the line between the box that actually is just south of the edge of Dr. Branny's property, running down to the Y joint. We've had some pretty significant blockages up in that area, to the point where they've actually had to go in there and do some digging, and going to have to continue to do some digging to clear it up. The feeling is, is that the way that it is set up, what they are planning to do, what Tom's team is planning to do, is here in the next week or so to do a short-term fix during the season, if they're during the golf season, is to go in there and clean out and replace the piece of line that's obviously collapsed, somewhere just east of the Y joint. And so that that way, it gets the entire storm sewer working again. The, this isn't really a good long-term solution to the problem, and so we're going to try to deal with two problems, two birds with one stone when we do this process. After the golf season, what Tom would like to do is from the box drain on the edge of Dr. Branny's property, he would erect or replace the entire line running from that down to the Y joint. Right now, that unit is a one-foot diameter line. And the feeling is, is that that unit is not sufficient enough to take all of the storm water that drains into that area. That line runs from the Catholic church and kind of circles around and comes down Pastime Earwens rental property, and comes down the edge of all those properties down into that box area. That line is about a 12-inch diameter line. It is feeding into a 36-inch diameter line. The concern is, is that back pressure on that smaller line is creating part of the blowout situations that are occurring further up the line, particularly French Strange's property is one of them, typically has been dealing with these issues quite a bit. Now, it's not the only reason they're having problems up there. Another reason is, is that that's all well tiled. It was laid on its side. It's not reinforced concrete. It was really never intended or designed to be used the way it was set to be used. So what is the first step in a solution that might cause some of the relief to that back pressure issue and stop the backflow issues that are occurring down here, is replace this entire piece of line. This, there's, I think we figure there may be 60 yards of line there at most.
Is that a map you have?
Yes, I'm going to show it to you guys here in a second. The...
Got a question. I see him.
Sure. The unit I'm referring to is this piece right here. And what this would do is, of course, reduce the pressure. It would take care of the area that seems to have the biggest backup problems going on with it. The, this should also, this should, we figure she cut the blowouts that are occurring up line about half compared. It won't stop the ones from a crushed line, but it should stop the ones from back pressure issues.
My question, either the farm tile that runs back behind the armory by me, comes down Gishwater, takes over about that area and runs over into the ripens from Bloss's field? Does that have anything to do with the blue kisus coming out of there?
That would be on the other line, which is the South Park line. We have not experienced any problems with the South Park line in that area. That is a three-foot wide line, to give you an example, comparison. The one over on the other side is a one-foot line.
Well, this is a 10-inch tile that runs out.
Yeah, it builds into a 36-inch tile, though. So it's got quite a tile it runs into.
It's got somewhere between there and my place of the block.
Yeah. If we were seeing it multiple...
All Georgia fields coming up and coming up into my yard.
If we were seeing multiple problems, this, we might be looking at, this is the first step. We're hoping this solves quite a bit of it. Really honestly, the true solution here is for us to go up to the Catholic church and tear this entire storm sewer out, all the way over to the O'Sullivan Golf Course. Talking with engineers two years ago, they quoted me a price of somewhere between 1.3 and 1.6 in terms of millions of dollars. So the feeling was, is that even with grant money, that was probably outside of our somewhat foreseeable future. So the idea is, is what can we do to mitigate the issue as we move forward? And Bob and I had worked and kicked the ideas of this project around a couple of different times, but it never got really a high priority status. Tom is feeling that it's time, this is the year we need to be taking care of this.
It's continually getting worse.
Yeah. And the idea behind it is, is if the back pressure is reduced, we might see a significant reduction in issues almost immediately, so.
So, but any idea of cost of replacing that 60 yards of line?
No, this is, this plan's been coming together in the last week. I just was kind of giving you a heads up on what we're putting together. I'll let you know what the pipe's going to cost. Outside of the pipe itself, you're primarily talking about our labor cost as the other major cost associated with it.
Are there items that we would not be able to do by doing this in-house?
The fortunate thing is, is that the storm sewer utility is one of the utilities that does have reserve money, particularly for these type of response purposes.
I'm talking about, in terms, if the labor force is doing that...
Other labor-related, that's always going to be the case. The nice thing is, is once we hit the middle of the summer, Bruce, usually that's our catch-up period. Spring's pretty tough, fall's pretty tough, but the middle of the summer usually is our catch-up period. And it's imperative that we catch up as much as possible. So the idea would be is we may not get as far ahead of ourselves as we want to as a result of this, but that's always something that could be compensated later, so.
I mean, I think it's a great idea. I was just wondering, when we do this, what else aren't we doing?
Sure. And I'm not going to sit here and tell you it's not going to have an impact in that perspective. The nice thing is, is that's one reason why we hire summer labor, is to kind of create more flexibility with our experienced qualified employees.
Okay. Eight miscellaneous G, is consideration of approving the Iowa 196 detour agreement between DOT and City of Sac City.
Since this is the first time you're seeing this, I'm not, I would rather you not move forward on it. I still have Colin taking a review of it. Basically, what is going on is next year, next spring, DOT intends to shut down 196 for pretty much the entire year, as they update it for the, what we all believe is the impending change over to US 71. When that occurs, they need a detour route, set up a paved detour route. We've been contacted by DOT requesting that M54 be the alternative route. Of course, what pertains to our interest is the portion that runs through city limits. So you're kind of about coming down Fifth Street, going across Old Highway 20, and going down South 16th Street as they funnel through town. There is typically compensation that goes with being a detour area through your area. More of that information will be coming out as we move forward, but this is the initial agreement that's been handed to Colin for review.
I assume they'll fix the M data on this.
I, that would be awfully difficult to accomplish, I would think.
Okay, H is committee and department head reports. Did you get the information on the meal center, Curtis? Did anybody get that to you, the flyer and that, for the summer meals?
Not quite. Hey, did you guys do the, did you leave?
We didn't do I. Thank you. We did not do I, which was...
You did H. It'd be next.
Okay, I is removed...
Are you done with H?
No, I'm not done with H. I'm sorry. Yeah, I got waylaid there. Committee and department head reports. I guess that's not a committee. I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, Curtis. I'll wait.
Was there, is there a water report in here?
I'm going to bet with...
Jim in the hospital?
Jim is not at work right now.
And then, I was just curious... And then, I was, I was just curious, I know in, I think it was last month, that there was quite a discrepancy between the amount of water we were pumping and the amount that was actually going into San Terry Sewer. I just wondered if that, that gap had narrowed or not.
They, I do know that they fixed a few leaks and that made some impact, but it was typically.
We've still had the, where the waters were, that had frozen too.
Yeah.
It was, maybe gallons or something like that. It was, I mean, it was, it was a huge gap a month ago between what was, what we were pumping and what we were.
Yeah, that would have been for March.
That was reflective of all the services that were left running during the winter freeze and it was extremely precarious.
No, I just, I just wondered if it had narrowed this month.
I do know it did. I can tell you how much it was. It's not stuck in my head. I'd be happy to have Jim talk to you about it.
I mean, I know he's ill. I was just, I was just trying to check up on that.
Has the historic preservation committee met? Are you gonna let me know?
No, I've tried, Brandy Ripley is chair of that. I've tried to spur a meeting and so far.
Okay, I'll speak with her too.
I'll, I'll encourage it again.
Okay. Anything else in that item? Then I, we moved C to I, which is consideration of setting pool wages for the two thousand fourteen pool year.
Because, looking at the fact that we've had a hard time getting lifeguards, and that won't affect anything for this year, maybe not, but I know that we did about twenty-eight, nine percent increase in the pool manager this year to last year. The salaries apparently for the guards are basically the same as they were last year. I would like to see us bump everything up a quarter right here. We're talking probably not much over a thousand bucks for the summer, but I think if we could do that, it would really be a goodwill gesture towards the lifeguards and maybe a step in not getting further behind in trying to find people to manage the pool next year. And, you know, we're trusting these people with wives and lots of little children who are barely over minimum wage. They could get more money than that doing childcare for three kids, you know.
Any discussion, council members?
I, I, I think that's reasonable. I do.
Just guards or concession workers also?
I would move to increase the guards and the concession workers by twenty-five cents an hour across the.
I'll second it.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to set the pool wages for two thousand fourteen pool year, but amend the pool guards and the concession stand workers by increasing twenty-five cents an hour.
And should that also be to hire these people to?
Yes.
Okay.
Make the motion to hire the people listed in.
Hiring and present, and to hire the people that are listed there. Okay, motion has been made and seconded. A call for a vote. Counselperson McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Perry?
Yes.
Motion's up. Thank you. The next one is the council forum. And I have something right off the bat here. Had Greg Allen come and visit me in my office today and ask about his camper. It was on a pad that he had made, and he made an arrangement with his neighbor that that was okay. Well, the house sold and he got a new neighbor. And at first, the neighbor said, yes, it was okay. And then the neighbor came back to him and said, I'm sorry, he said, I'd like to let you do it, but my insurance person said that I could have some liability here and I really don't want that. So he had to move his camper until he can figure out what else he's going to do with it. His question to me was, he's gone around, he's taken pictures of over thirty campers that are not on pads. He wants to know if they all get notification. And I'm just bringing it to you. And I said, you know, there's no way, I can't tell you that all those people have gotten notifications because it isn't reported to the paper or anything like that. He said, I'm not angry in that, he said, but I just think it would only be right if I got notified. Then, did everybody else get notified?
It's a complaint-based system. Well, I'd be happy if the council wants the police department to enforce all of them. We will be happy to act upon them. But we have, in the past, there's been quite a bit of discussion above the council about how we want to enforce those, and it's always been on a complaint basis. But if you want to change that policy.
Well, I'm just doing, I brought it to you because I think you should know when somebody's asking, that's all.
A lot of people do more than twenty-five miles an hour through downtown, but not all of them get tickets. It's scary. But is it a problem? Is it a can of worms? Do we really want to open? I'm asking that as a question. Is it really a problem?
Well, if it's on a complaint basis, I'm not asking if you wanted to change it. I'm just, this is a place to discuss this and I'm bringing it so the council is aware. That's all I'm doing. If you don't want to make a change, you don't have to do anything. I'm doing what I was asked to do.
In my opinion, I'd like to keep it as a complaint basis because, you know, if it's not an eyesore, if the people are keeping it well-kept, then I, I don't know if I see a problem. If somebody is allowing weeds to go around it and not moving it and it's junk-looking, then I think, we, in the past, we've been properly addressing it when it comes to that. But when it's neat and it's not an eyesore, I, I don't, I have not seen it to be a problem.
On the street sign, did you happen to check it out and see if there, remember I called and said I thought there was a street sign missing? Was it South Tenth Street?
I'll have to look back in my notes and see if I remember.
Yeah, I, I, because I was trying to find an address and there just was no street sign.
You put my job somewhere, Tents and Roberts.
Yeah, I think that's it, yeah.
Backing up to the camper issue, I mean, the, the ordinance, as I recall, says that they have to be on a gravel pad or a concrete pad. And I understand the rationale for, you know, for that. And part of me says that if it's, you know, if it's a lot, it should be enforced. I mean, how you enforce it is the question. How many people do you have that actually complain about those? You know, I've heard.
Five or six maybe a year.
And most of the time, it is because it looks, it's an eyesore, not because.
Maybe the camper isn't even used. I know there's some sitting around that they aren't even using and it just, I think they store stuff in it and it is a mess around it.
I mean, I've had the question raised about how many campers can one have? And at the moment, I think the ordinance, there's no, there's nothing in the ordinance that says you.
It isn't clearly identified.
You could have fifteen campers if they were all on a concrete pad.
It still could be considered a nuisance, so I think there's an option, but it can go around that. Personally, I don't think it's necessary to have them on, I mean, that's a lot of expense to have a camper, but they're, most of them store, a lot of them in the wintertime in an appropriate place anyhow, not on the property, but this is my opinion.
Yeah, I'd kind of like just leave it on a complaint basis when it gets to be a nuisance, you know, like.
I agree.
Okay, I'd like to ask about Greg Minor property. Has he been served for grass?
It is currently getting mowed.
Okay, it's across from Methodist Church.
It was being mowed. It was being mowed right before I came to the council meetings.
Okay.
I'll get a pen.
Well, I, that was an issue last year because I had the person that mows it come in and say, I'm not mowing it again if I'm not gonna get paid for doing it.
And those organs will take care of that. They won't have to serve them another seven days. City will just go and mow it now because of this ordinance that was passed.
Like I said, his drains lie in the.
They can force them. That's good.
Because one thing we struggle with in those, in that ordinance, in that process with nuisances, is people can skirt the system to go six to eight weeks before we can force them to do something about it. And with grass, that's really not an acceptable process. Now, we'll be able to deal with it in a much shorter time span, and for repeat offenders, we will be able to act almost immediately with, with repeat offenders.
We did, go ahead.
I just did, I was gonna change the subject.
Well, I'm gonna change it too.
Okay.
Go ahead and change it.
Ida Grove is hosting the Northwest Iowa League meeting on June nineteenth, and our next planning session is this Thursday, so don't forget that. It's Thursday at seven AM. And then, the only other thing I wanted to point out is I did talk with Bruce Bergman, who is the general counsel for the League of Cities, and he is preparing some information, including a webinar for us pertaining to council procedures. So as soon as I have the link for all of that webinar information, I'll share that with you so you guys can watch the video and start to prepare for that information.
Okay, Partners for Progress had a meeting, and I don't know if all of you are aware of it, but the, the senior meal center is struggling a bit. They had somebody donate the, to pay for the utility bill. And I mentioned that Partners for Progress, and they said that's what their group was all about, so they donated five hundred dollars to the senior meal center. So, you know, if you see some big sale on ground beef or, and you care to make a donation to them, they will take donations, so.
And they're having a fundraising meal on Sunday.
June first.
June first.
Viscets and gravy, yep. And they are serving a lot of people. There aren't, there aren't so many people that come to the center on a daily basis, but I've delivered meals on wheels and we deliver a lot of meals to homes. So it's really a very necessary thing in our community. Okay? Anything else for the good of the cause?
When I went to the Clayton Energy Training last week, I learned more about drilling gas and natural, and oil and those kind of things, and maybe it was necessary, but it was kind of nice to, it was good to hear their forecast of what they expect prices doing and what they expect the weather doing, although how you can predict weather twelve months in advance, still leaves me scratching a little bit here I have left. But it was a worthwhile educational thing to do.
Anything else?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. Please call for a vote. Counselperson Carrie?
Yes.
McGinty?
Yes.
Brandy?
Yes.
Motion's up. Thank you.
Appreciate you answering the important question, I was.